I call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, October 14th, 2024. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Holly, we call the roll, please.
Lanyon?
Here.
Pratt?
Here.
Jenkins? Ben Ossberg?
Here.
Reins?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
I would take the motion for an approved absence for Councilman Jenkins.
So.
Thank you. Do I support? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now I'm looking for approval of the agenda as submitted unless there are changes that need to be noted.
So.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes for presentation if there's somebody that would like to come forward at this time. If you could state your name and your address for our records, please, I'd appreciate it.
My name is Jerry Voltschut, 4046 Meadowbill Drive. I'm here representing a small committee that we formed to encourage the city to build new pickleball courts. And we're looking at building those at Dollstrom Park as a possibility. So we met a couple of weeks ago, John Bowman and several members of the committee, the park and rec committee, presented our proposal to bill four courts over there. And they gave us questions on that, we'll give you answers then.
All right, great. Thanks so much for being here this evening.
Hi, John Bowman. First, I'd like to thank the council and city manager and friends of the park for putting on just an amazing festival this weekend. I had a chance to attend all three days of the chainsaw art in the park and it was really, really an outstanding event. So, you know, thanks for, thanks for supporting that. Um, yes, I addressed the Parks and Rec Commission on the question of, of, of having the council consider building some pickleball courts. Uh, we've looked at a number of locations. Dollstrom seemed to be a potential spot. The Parks and Rec Commission seemed to be supportive of that idea. Um, and the next step, um, as we understand it, would be to, to bring in a, a park plan or a park designer to, to gather some ideas from the community that would include not only the pickleball courts, but, um, other potential improvements to that park. It seems to us, um, that it's, that it's a somewhat underutilized park in our community. We know it's, uh, important for Jubilee. We know it's important for our parking, for football games and that sort of thing. But beyond that, it seems like there's, there's promise there that we could do more with it. So we're really excited about the idea of moving forward with gathering some plans and, and seeing what we could do. Um, and, and as we talked to the Parks and Rec Commission, pickleball is, uh, is a, you know, the fastest growing sport in America. We're seeing pickleball courts being built in all of our surrounding communities. And we'd really like to see Williamson, you know, catch up with those. And we think it could be a really nice community asset. So, uh, as Jerry said, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to address them. Yes.
Yeah. Did you have a timeframe in mind? You were hoping to get this done?
Well, our, our hope, and then we need advice from you, is, is we'd like to, um, position it so we, for the next grant cycle.
So April, April 1, I believe, is the, the, the grant cycle for both the Natural Resources Trust Fund
or the Recreation Passport Grants. So the hope would be that you could bring on board a, a consultant, a designer. They would have some recommendations for you. You would approve those and still give us time then to apply for a grant to enter that cycle.
Right. And we're jumping ahead just a little bit because this is an action item in our agenda. So, um, we're definitely going to have questions, discussion, and John's going to share some information. And that was a great question, Scott, but, um, we'll, we'll circle back around to that, at that action item.
Absolutely. Alright, thank you so much.
Thanks. All right. There's nobody else for audience participation. I'm looking for approval of the council meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2024.
Move to approve.
Thank you so much. Do I support? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Brandon, did you have an opportunity to look at accounts payable?
I certainly did. Um, have a large one this period because we were out for three weeks. Uh, and we had some tax payments. We also did the sidewalk repairs, um, some maintenance for our vehicles and our cadets schooling, which is great to have him onboard. I didn't have any questions, um, but we'll open that up if others do. So before we get to that, I'll make a motion to approve tracks 77844 through 77883, ACA 1113 through 1153 for a grand total of $1,338,777.01.
Thank you so much. Uh, council members, do you have any questions regarding any of the accounts payable this evening? If not, I'm looking for the support of that motion.
Hold it.
Thank you. Terry? Yes, Dan?
I only have one question. So wild type design with McCormick Park maintenance, is that the outfit that we usually have do the controlled burn as well?
Yes.
But we didn't have one of those this year, did we?
We did.
We did?
I must admit that. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Yes, John?
They don't necessarily do the controlled burn every year, but they do, they do call back the, I mean, most of the, even the leaves are native species, but they do do maintenance for us every year.
Okay, great. Thanks. Great question. All right, I have the motion. I have support. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Ben Ossberg?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our action items, our first action item is going to be a Dollstrom Park design plan proposal. And just like our, our two members from our audience mentioned, they were, are looking for additional pickleball courts here in Williamson because it is quite the rage. And so I will go ahead and turn this over to our city manager, John Hannipin. We do have a memo in our packet.
Thank you. Um, so we, we did at the Parks and Rec meeting, the last time we met, we had a really good discussion. The jumping on line for Dollstrom Park was the request from, uh, I think, uh, I think some of the members live in the community. I think some of them are in the township as well, but they were requesting that the, the city, um, explore Dollstrom to add pickleball courts. And, and in a general sense, I think adding pickleball is, is a good thing. And it is a, is super popular sport and the courts that we do have here are, are constantly busy. And that's a good thing. We want your parks to be used. But, um, given, given the fact that there are other uses at Dollstrom and, and one of the reasons I think Dollstrom is underutilized, maybe on a daily basis, is because there hasn't been a lot of resources spent there. And we have to be mindful that when we talk about grant cycles, we're already in the queue for the, the Honor for All Memorial Park Trail for next grant cycle. Um, and that's our, our big effort. You know, we already secured $800,000 to the county. And so peer bidding grants, we want to make sure that if we're submitting for M N T R F that we're, we're doing that. But really for Dollstrom Park, I think it's important that we do a, a design plan. We hire, there, there's a number of firms that do that. Most landscape architecture firms will do it, and there's even some that specialize exclusively in parks. And I think the first step is just asking the question of what we'd like to see at Dollstrom Park. Um, just a reminder for everybody, we did update our Parks and Rec master plan. And we did talk about Dollstrom, that it's in needs of, of some, some care and some, some improvements over time. But we, we do also have to be mindful, we have events that have gone on there for 50 years.
Right.
And, you know, before we launch into a new venture, which I, I do support, I think pickleball's great. I think there's, there's a place for it. There may be a place for it at the park. But we need to have it appropriately planned, have the Parks and Recreation Committee review that plan, and then make a recommendation to council, and then budget accordingly. Um, and that, and then in respect for the group that has the MP behind it, that should be on our timeframe, frankly. And our timeframe means within the context of our, our budget and our ability to find something like that.
So what I would say is, um, you know, at first glance, and, you know, I've lived here my entire life, um, it is underutilized, but there's multiple purposes for that space. Um, number one, I'd love to see an actual survey done to know what belongs to us, what belongs to the school. Because there is shared property over there, and I think Dan is probably going to want to comment on this as well. Um, you know, there's city parking over there. I'd like to know how far back we could go, um, at the edge of the wetlands, what's usable. And really look at best use for that location. We have beautiful space over at Memorial Park near the school, um, that maybe that's something that gets incorporated, whether it's here at Dollstrom Park or over at Memorial Park. Pickleball courts can go anywhere. Um, I even looked to see if one could fit in Volunteers Park while, you know, the kids are on their playground, parents can play pickleball. Um, so I think it's a great idea. I think this would be, um, appropriate to put on our, uh, planning session after the first of the year when we have our new council members join on. Um, but that, that's my, uh, that's my first glance at it. Dan?
I think, I think having, uh, I think Dollstrom Park, a lot of the development that's happened in Dollstrom Park over the years was, was done by the Lions Club of Jubilee. I don't, I don't know how many city dog, I'm not saying nothing's ever been spent down there, but very little.
Correct.
Like, that's why the fence is, you know, looks like it was built by volunteers with scrap metal because it was built by volunteers with scrap metal.
Two volunteers sitting right here at this council table, probably.
You know, um, you know, so the idea that we could spend, you know, find a way to put some more city resources down there, I think would be good. How we do that and how it's utilized, I'd like to, like to see Jubilee have a seat. Not that Jubilee gets the deciding factor vote or anything on it, but they need, they should have a seat at the table because the way, the way things get set up down there, it's like the infrastructure that's there, like the sewer drop, the water hookups, all these different things were put there because we have to have them and they're, and that they have to be in a way like where the, where the, on the map, the pickleball courts are. Like right now, if we were to do that and they were to be fenced in like it's been, that, that could cause it, it like not insurmountable issues, but like was set up and tear down, the way we move things. Just as we go through this, whatever's decided, as we go, I'd like to see.
Yeah, I would absolutely advocate for Jubilee to be a part of that discussion because it is our biggest, um, event of the year. It's what we're known for, again, 52 years going on 53 now. Um, so I would, I would totally support Jubilee having a part of that discussion.
Good question, please.
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a pickleball fan, and so I saw my first pickleball court tonight. I walked through the park over there and I saw this pickleball, I saw this court and people were playing this thing. I thought, what in the world is that? Well, that's a pickleball court. My problem with this thing, this whole thing in Dollstrom was I thought pickleball courts needed tall fences like tennis courts or something. And I thought, there's, it's going to be difficult to get the pickleball thing in there and get the Jubilee and move things around and all that. But there aren't any fences at the pickleball courts over here.
Right.
So if there's a, if there, if the fencing is minimal, that, for my main objection to the whole deal, that takes, that, that's gone.
Right. And I think just, um, you know, I asked for the motion. I mean, this is definitely a discovery phase. So there's a lot of opportunity for discussion. Um, and I think it's a, a good idea to have the discussion. And it's a good idea to, to see what we can do to improve that space um, in addition to, you know, every other park that we, that we have here in the community because it's a resource for everybody. So, yes, Tom?
One thing, real quick. So you kind of like touched on it when you were talking about maybe some other locations where pickleball might work. My concern is the same as everybody else is that Jubilee is kind of, is Williamson and Williamson is Jubilee and I hate to see us start picking away at the park to where it minimizes some, because we use every square inch of that park for Jubilee, basically. We don't have room to give up. So, um, while we're doing this project and looking at Dollstrom Park design plan proposals, you know, as long as we can kind of intertwine some of the other park, you know, possibilities into that, I think it's a great idea to put pickleball courts somewhere in our community.
That was just a suggestion that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's the best place or not, but we can definitely go forward and look and see.
Yeah, that was my question, was do you at this point have an opinion of the best place at this point, or is that pending?
Well, I, to the chair, sorry.
Yes.
I, I mean, I, I don't. Um, we, we surveyed the community and, and pickleball was, was noted, but it wasn't at the top. I mean, what was at the top and this priority we're working on from a planning and financial standpoint was really the, the Honor for All Memorial Park Trail. And that was looked at the big project for the next five years. I, I think that, I mean, I, I play pickleball. I mean, there, there are, there are, there might be other places to do it. Um, but I think first and foremost, beyond that, I mean, we're, and we're talking about, um, this tomorrow at the DDA as well because it came up at a DDA meeting a couple of meetings ago, like it was right after Jubilee. It's like, geez, you know, that's in the DDA. Is there something that we can do as a DDA to help enhance the look at the park? And that was independent, that was like basically for, for the Jubilee event that takes place that week. Um, so I, I think there's, I don't know what is, pickleball court scales out to. I'm sure the dimensions here are right or are pretty close to being right. But first and foremost, we have to decide Dollstrom Park, what do we want to see there? Um, and pickleball could be part of that. And if they're not part of that, there's not a consensus at Dollstrom, then there could be other locations. For sure. And, and I don't think it's anything like, we're going to miss the bus if we don't build a pickleball court in the next construction season. I don't, I don't think that's the case at all. And if the demand is truly what it is, um, and then I did mention this at the, at the Parks meeting, is that particularly on the west side of the state where there's a lot of communities that are still in that urban sprawl phase, they've thrown up pickleball courts next to the neighborhoods, and guess what they're doing? Taking off the pickleball courts.
Oh, really?
And I'm not trying to be the pickleball court alarmist because I play pickleball. But that, I think it's, it is, Grandville, one, one of the, uh, one of the larger suburbs, bedroom suburbs of Grand Rapids did that. So you just have to be mindful of those things and, you know, in deference to the group that's passionate about pickleball, um, you know, we have, that fits into the priorities of everything else that we have to consider when we're planning parks. And, and, you know, if you put a, give you the tennis court as an example, Memorial Park.
Right.
It's, when was the last time those were in use?
Long time.
And I'm not relating pickleball use to tennis courts, but it's been that, like that a long time. So it's a 40, 50 year commitment when you're making, whether it's a basketball court or a curling rink or anything like that, you're making a long-term commitment to it. So I think, I think we have to be mindful of that. So.
I think.
Is there something with you and curling?
Yes, there is.
I'm a fan of winter sports, Commissioner Hanson.
Well, I think that this gives good traction to future conversations.
Right, absolutely.
And it encompasses our parks, it encompasses, um, getting out and, and, and our community being active. Maybe there's a way where we could make a pickleball court, but also have it be a multi-activity surface.
Correct.
Or something. So like I said, this is great traction for future conversation. With that being said, I'm looking for a motion, uh, that is here at the bottom of the memo that our city manager is providing.
I'll make a motion to request staff see proposals for planning and design services for Dollstrom Park.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second.
All right, thank you both. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ben Ossberg?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, next on our.
Just a quick question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No. So what exactly do you just approve?
We approved.
Hiring a consultant to land a park?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Thanks.
Yep.
All right, uh, on our, uh, action item, we have our second reading of the amendment for zoning ordinance for the address of 301 Lynn Road. And this is the second reading. I will go ahead and turn this over to our city manager.
Yeah, I guess nothing to add. I mean, council approved this for first reading last time and set it for today. This is a approximately 15 acre parcel on 301 Lynn Road, which is just west of the Antique Store. So this is allowing the resounding change from our R1 family rural residential and open space to R3 multiple family residential district.
All right, great. I'm looking for a motion for this action item.
Uh, make a motion to adopt the proposed amendment, the city's zoning ordinance for that lot.
301.
Lot 301.
Lynn Road.
Lynn Road, yes.
Alright. If that's, if that's sufficient, I'm looking for support, please.
Second.
Thank you. If there's no questions, Holly, will you, oh, yes, Dan.
Did anyone, you were at the planning committee, did anyone speak against it all?
There were a couple of, to the chair, sorry.
Yes.
Keep jumping ship here. Um, there were, there were a couple of folks, um, in the Blimley Landing neighborhood that were there to hear what the proposals were. Um, and there was a little bit of misinformation. They thought that it was being rezoned to commercial property.
Okay.
And so there were, there was Ken Smuziak who's on the ARCA board, and then Chandler Owen was the other resident that was there. That was the only few that we were.
And it wasn't enough, and they, they had questions and the developers have answered them and we're giving them reinsurance, so.
Dan?
And we're just changing the zoning currently. They still have to put in site claim.
Yeah, it's correct.
Do all these other things. This is just basically the first step of the process. Can you even allow anything?
Yeah.
And it's going from a single residential to, um, multi-family residential.
Not changing a whole lot.
So it's not, yeah, it's definitely not going commercial.
Okay.
All right. Um, we had a motion, we had support. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ben Ossberg?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
All right. Our last action item is the appointment of Sharon Lapointe to the Downtown Development Authority for a term that expires 6/30 of 2028. Um, for most of you that do know Sharon or don't, uh, she's been a big part of Sowing Growth, which is our, uh, board that runs our farmer's market here, um, within our community. Uh, she's a great advocate of Williamson, so I'd be very happy to entertain that motion for her to join the Downtown Development Authority.
I'll move.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Second.
All right. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ben Ossberg?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. Moving along on our agenda to our discussion items. Our first is the construction project update, and all three of these will be handled by our city manager, John Hannipin. Hi.
Hi. Um, so just continue to finalize the punch list on our, our three main projects. We did repave the Williams and McCormick intersection and it looks a lot better. There was some rutting and a new pavement from, uh, some of the manhole cut-ins that we did, so that looks a lot better. Um, the plan this week is to do the micro surface for the entire length of William Street because there was imperfections throughout. They weren't structural, um, but still, it's a new street and Iron Horse owes us a, a finished product and they're committed to doing that. We did, uh, finish up some of the easement restorations on Potnom, Williams and Lloyd, and the grass is coming in nicely with a little bit cooler fall weather. Trees should be planted this week on North Potnom, the, the trees that, uh, were part of the replacement. We will do another round of planting in the spring, um, and, on, on all three streets to replace those. As I said, there are still some mulch blankets out there. Um, also, we're kind of hopefully getting close to the end of Surfnet and Frontier and WOW and just about everybody with drill rig operating in our right of ways. And I know that's been some changes and folks have seen some different elements in there, but we're, we're very limited on what we, what we can't allow in the easements. I mean, there are certain, uh, there are certain restrictions and there have to be, you know, the construction methods have to be sound, there has to be mist digs for, for directional moors and things like that. But when, as far as like, you know, some of the apparatus that the, the companies build, um, we're, we're obligated to permit those. We review them, but we, we can't deny them because we may not like, you know, specifically how they look or anything like that. So I know there's been some discussion about that recently, so. But we do review all those permits, um, and as I said, hopefully we get to, close to the end of that, so. Been a little bit of a challenge with some of the easement restorations and frankly, we just, there's another permit that came in today for Frontier, and they've been probably better than others, but still not great. We're just amping up the amount of, of bond or cash bond that they're required to provide to make sure that we have funds to restore easements.
And just for, for clarification for our viewing audience, um, when we have utilities, uh, whether it's, uh, you know, fiber or, uh, electric or whatever, and something goes in our right of way, they provide us those specs.
Correct.
And it's, there would never be something that would be, uh, obstruction visually for driving.
Correct.
I mean, that's all taken in consideration when they place those things.
That's correct.
So anything that's out there, it's, it's met the requirements that it needs to for being in the right of way.
That's correct.
Okay, great. And we don't have governance over those once they're put in. Those belong to the utility companies.
The only, if, if there was, something would fall out of disrepair, would become a safety hazard, then, then we can require them to fix it.
Correct.
If it was an extreme situation, then we could, we could fix it ourselves.
Okay.
Typically with telecommunications, it's low voltage, so it's not the same as dealing with like a transformer for the electric utility.
Right. And just for our viewing community too, if you do see something in disrepair, please let us know. We have a wonderful city staff that can contact whoever that provider or, or utility company is to make sure that they come out and, and make those repairs. I mean, we do stay on top of things. Terry?
Quick question. Um, in your experience, how often are these performance bonds, how often are they, how often do companies fail in doing this kind of infrastructure stuff?
How often do they fail? That's a great question. Uh, this type, when you consider that literally miles and miles of, of cable that's put in the ground, like on a, you know, on a statistical basis, it's not much. But that doesn't do much for the folks on Lloyd Street who had to, you know, live with all summer with, with dirt set of grass. So it doesn't matter whether their success rate is, you know, 100%, and that would be great, but it's not. So I, I can't, I can't quantify that for you.
I mean, in your experience, is it, does it often, is this kind of thing, does it often result in the failure? And then the, what happens when the bond, when they don't do the thing that the bond is securing? Then we get the bond? Is that the way?
Yep, you make a claim on the bond.
We get some cash out of it.
Correct, right.
How often, in your experience, how often do cities get cash from those kind of things?
Again, I can't quantify that for you because frankly, this is my first experience in 30 years of having this much activity in one town.
Okay.
And it's literally miles and miles and miles of cable. But I, but I can tell you that, you know, we, we've had a couple that will have to, we, we had to take some action on our own. And it's not, you know, thousands of dollars, it's hundreds, hundreds of dollars, but we'll be making a claim on that. And we'll give the, the opportunity from the company to, to pay us rather than going through the bond recovery process.
Great questions, Terry. Dan, go ahead.
Um, utility upgrades next to the depot. Do we have any idea on a timeline on when any of that might be finishing off?
Yeah.
We just talked about that earlier.
It's pretty tore up.
They have, they have till November 1st.
Correct, November 1st.
Through the end of this month.
If, if you drive by, you can see the, the large Lego set that's out there, which is the retaining wall.
Yep.
And that's, I was told that will be the, that's the final phase.
Yep.
Because they have all the, the actual connection is done. Um, and in the end, it's not going to look a whole lot different other than that retaining wall and then some landscaping around it. But they are in the, you know, as long as the weather holds like it has been, they should be right on schedule.
They promised us not getting interfered with Jubilee.
No. All that space in Dollstrom Park that they're using, there's nothing we got. All right, moving along, we've got our master plan update, which our planning commission has been working on. We've had our survey, um, results come in. What's the update for us, John?
Yeah, a couple of things. We, we did talk about the survey results and, and some of the highlights. Folks are generally happy with the, the number and kind of housing in town, and that's per the survey. And granted, we didn't talk to all, you know, 3,800 people in town, but, but the overwhelming number of, of folks are generally happy. And, you know, not to get too far in the weeds of, you know, price points and things like that or adding more of this or that. They're generally happy with what we have. There is a real, um, strong feeling about enhancing, and the words, expand the downtown. Um, and I, I don't think folks necessarily mean our downtown, you know, growing, um, like horizontally. Or I, I don't think that, you know, expanding out east, west, north or south, it's more enhancing what we have in the downtown um, and, and to keep our, our small town and community feel. So those are the highlights. I mean, I think I shared all that information with, with council. It's been in the planning packet, certainly available to the public if they want to see it. And we'll use that information to continue to formulate some of the, the broader goals and objectives of the master plan. And we're also really focused on the Williamson Road corridor. Um, and then the next phase will be on the Grand River corridor on what things, how things look and, and, you know, how that feels and making sure that we're maintaining what we have. So we spent quite a bit of time on that, and I think that's important. I think we should.
Um, our next is the main force safety improvement that you and Phil from Spicer had an opportunity to meet with MDOT.
We did. It was myself and, and Phil and countless members from, from MDOT. And it was, it was a good discussion about the, the concept plan that we shared. MDOT is, is reviewing some of the treatments that they were allowed in other communities. We also talked about the, the signal coming in 2026, that that's a, for them, that is a certainty, that project is coming. And so they were reviewing it with their engineers, with the, the addition of turn lanes. And, and they're certainly amenable to us doing enhanced crosswalks. They were a little, I, I was a little surprised on this because in other community, that, communities that I've worked in plural, they, as long as the, the community was paying for it, they allowed the, you know, the, the different colored asphalt treatments. So, and you can see those, you know, many, many communities in Michigan. So they were going to go back and look and make sure that, um, that would pass, you know, their engineering standards, you know, their engineering standards, which, which I think it will. So, it was a good discussion. And I was still a little confused as to why, there was nine other people on the call, but I think that's may. We're still marching towards hopefully having those improvements next.
Great. All right, on our agenda for correspondence received, we did not receive any. We're going to go into our department head reports. I'd like to actually start with Holly, because Holly, you have an election coming up in less than three weeks. We'll have one more council meeting before that election cycle begins, and it's a longer election period. So, can you tell me how you're feeling about getting ready for our November election? How your staff is feeling? And when does voting actually start and when does it end? And I know that we're also getting in absentee ballots, too.
Yes, Williamson is very high on our absentee return rate already.
Good.
The county clerk has been blasting those numbers out probably once a week, and Williamson, I think, is in the top, so, in the county. So, that's really great. We've had, I mean, the voters have been amazing. Anytime we've had any issues that we need them to clear up, they've been great to work with, and, and I truly appreciate that. And the police chief and I have had a meeting to really get down in the nitty gritty about, you know, safety and making sure everybody is taken care of. And I think we have a really good plan going forward, because that's, that's a big, you know, issue right now. But I, I think our outlook is going really well, surprisingly, very smooth.
Great.
So, yay. Early voting is due to start on October 26th, and that is 8:30 to 4:30 every single day for nine days. It ends on November 3rd. We will have setup on November 4th, and then on November 5th, it'll be another day of voting. So, I know Brandon Lanyon, he's offered to be an inspector, so we appreciate. So, we have other inspectors. We kind of kept to the ones that we've been using throughout the year to keep everything kind of safe, and everything, we are hiring in two new ones, so. But we are keeping it kind of at a minimal. We want to have people we trust at this time, so. But, you know, everybody has been really great, and I'm very thankful.
Great. And Holly, for that early voting that happens, October 26th through November 3rd, the location for that is right here at Council Chambers.
Yep, when you get to cast your vote in person, it's just like you went on the watch today. Right, exactly the same.
And then you'll.
You come in, you fill out the app, they give you a ballot, right, and you vote it, and then put it in the tabulator, so.
All right, great. Well, that's good to know. Thank you so much for letting me put you on the spot, but I didn't want to wait until our next council meeting, because then it's just going to be a little bit too late. So, I hope our viewing community can appreciate that update, because, you know, it's, it's a big year, and I know that you guys are going to be ready for it. And we look forward to hearing how it went, so, appreciate that. Now, we'll jump back over to our City Manager, John Hannipin, for his department update.
Just a couple of very brief things. I just want to thank Friends of Williamson Parks and the community for the great Chainsaw Art in the Park event. I saw a lot of you folks there, and we had a couple of you volunteer, which was awesome. And I think that, that result is great. New sculptures look amazing. Took some time at, at the end of the day today, before the meeting started, to hang out over there a little bit. There was several groups of people walking around, taking pictures of new sculptures, so that's pretty cool. Want to thank all the downtown folks that participated in the light pole decoration. I think they're really taking off. People really leaned into it this year. It's really, really cool, so, really, really lively weekend. And then next week, on Tuesday, is Taste of Williamson at the Senior Center. So, if you haven't got your tickets for that, please do. Should be a great event. It's for a great cause, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Chief, we've got your memo in here with your statistics, but it's your opportunity to give us your update.
Sure. The, of course, for the highlights, the officers continue to attend the fall sports. The last football game is this Friday, so they'll, they'll be there for that. And then they'll be switching to basketball, and going to the basketball volleyball games and whatnot. Just officers and reserve officers assisted with the homecoming parade. It went great. There's actually a lot of people that showed up for the parade. I mean, it was, it was busy. I attended the MML Leaf. It's called Law Enforcement Advisory Forum Training Conference. It's excellent. MML has their attorneys there, so it's kind of a three-day chance for all the chiefs to pick the attorney's braids. That was great, though, it's. We all, all the staff completed fall range qualification and training. And staff, we started, I have enrolled us in a program called Capital Region Integrated Critical Skills Training, where it's in conjunction with Lansing Police Department, Marinian, East Lansing, and the Sheriff's Office, or the instructors. And our officers attend this training on duty. It's a one-hour training. Sometimes it's at various locations around the county, but they attend this training on duty. One month it may be like responding to a domestic situation. One month it may be, you know, a potential shooting. So, it's, it's a great program. It's been going on for about a year now. It doesn't cost us anything, other than to have them go while they're working on duty, so it's, it's, had a lot of good feedback from that. Of course, with Holly, we've been talking about election security and intelligence briefings. About every two or three days, we get more intelligence briefings about election security. And as Holly said, we're, we're prepared. Reserves attended this weekend, the Chainsaw Art in the Park. There was no issues. It was, it was a good weekend. And for Taste Williamson next Tuesday, I'll be a, a, what they call a celebrity waiter for you. So, there are a few other people that are going to be there, so it's, it should be a good evening, so I hope everyone bought their ticket.
Can you fill in our committee about your activities today?
Yeah, so, I did sell a crime. We responded to the guy about this church for a break-in, and for all intensive reasons, the office glass window was broken. There was blood on the, on the floor. The, the office was disheveled. So, we surrounded the place with a few mutual aid agencies. A canine came in at East Lansing Police Department, did a canine search. Didn't find anybody, but I solved it quickly when I found the deer here on the, on the window. So, a deer jumped through the window, and then it jumped back out. And it was a buck, because the, the light had a big gouge right down the middle of it from its horns, so.
Did it survive?
Uh, it must have. It got back out. There were scratches all over the desk from those hooves and.
I told him he wasn't a very good hunter. He did not follow the.
No, I, we.
Is there a warrant out for the deer's arrest?
I, I told our mutual aid guys, I, I don't want to hear any Ruoff jokes or any of your jokes or anything like that.
Well, we appreciate you being down there and, and securing that, because not knowing what the situation was, but, you know, feel bad for the church, feel bad for the deer, but, you know, you guys got to put your investigative skills to work.
Could have been a lot worse.
Could have been a lot worse, that's right. All right. We do have some information in here from our Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineering, which handles all of our permitting for work, whether it's residential or commercial in Williamson. So, I would ask if you have questions regarding anything on this report that you check in with our City Manager, and he can get those answered for you. We also have our budget report in here. If you have questions regarding our budget, please. Yes, John, you can hand up.
Yeah, just, I mean, through the first quarter, everything's tracking as it should, but just wanted to remind folks that our audit presentation will be, the audit is complete and it is available, but it will, the presentation will be at the next council meeting. And I'm sure folks will be enlightened by PowerPoint.
It's, it's always great when they come in and tell us that we're doing a good job, because we, our treasurers are fantastic and keep us on, on point. But if you do have questions regarding the budget, please feel free to seek out that answer from Tom or from, from John. All right, anyone want to share any committee or subcommittee reports? Tom?
We had an recent meeting last week. No action items. The primary discussion items were going to be budgets. That's coming up quick. They want to pass that in December. The 25 budget wasn't prepared yet, so we were, we were going to kind of revert and just go through the 24 budget to date, because it, apparently not much has changed. But we didn't do that, because it was screwed up where a bunch of the building and equipment money spent were in the general fund, and they had to move some things around, and it looked bad. It looked like the general fund was out of money. So, this is probably not worth discussing at the moment until they get this out. So, we didn't, we didn't accomplish a ton. They did show us, this was at the Leroy Station in Webberville, which they made some cool improvements down there. If you remember, maybe a year ago, there was a lot of talk about, a lot of the Webberville and Leroy Township residents were wanting to get an ambulance service down that way, since we have multiples here in Williamson full-time. And so, they're making some improvements down there. They, they kind of remodeled the kitchen. They're putting a bedroom area. They're going to put in a makeshift locker room. They're going to kind of get it down, even though they can't do the huge renovation they want them to do, they want to get it where they can put a crew there when needed, so.
Awesome.
They're getting there. And then they are modifying the pole barn in there with a big donation of lumber from, I believe, MPC. I'm almost positive. If not, they get credit for that, but. They're turning their pole barn into basically a two-story training structure, which would be very nice to have for search and rescue type stuff. It'll help them host more classes for fire, you know, certification classes and things like that, so.
Great.
Some cool things happening down there.
Dan has a question for you.
Yes.
So, with the, with the budget process and not being able to discuss the budget this, this past meeting, does that seem like somewhat of a regular issue? Because I feel like there was an issue with being able to see and discuss the budget last budget cycle as they were going up.
There was a similar issue last year, and we're hoping they can get that solved for years to come. We're, we're going to be quick on our feet in the next two months, because next November, they're going to want to bring in, you know, the proposed budget discussing, because they have to set a public meeting for December and pass it in December, because it's going to happen. So, hopefully, that'll all go to plan in the next, next few weeks.
And what's the, the big number of the budget? What's the total in money? We're talking 1.5 billion, 2.5?
It's 2 point, I don't want to misquote, 2 point something when you combine general and building equipment. I couldn't say exactly, but.
Sorry.
Over $2. So, this isn't $20,000 or something?
No, no, this is a good sense of budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. We want to make sure we're doing our due diligence to, to make it right.
Well, when you have that update for us, that would be great. Anybody else for your committees, subcommittees? Terry?
Parks and Rec, we didn't meet, but we had this Chainsaw Art in the Park event, and it was, it was really good. I was able to be there Friday and Sunday. I was out of town on, on Saturday there. Sunday, it got rained on somewhat, but that was the awards ceremony, and it was, it was just good to do it. The, the number of people that contributed to it and helped with it and all that was really, was really amazing. I've been involved now with this local government thing for three years. Never did local government before. If I were to put, what have I learned in local government stuff? If I were to put, number one, it would be, it's all about the funding, right? If you've got the funding, then you can make it happen. Well, the funding, that's Heather, the volunteers, the friends of Williamson Parks, and I think her name is Lena?
Lena, Lena Chapman.
Yeah. The two of them, I, we had, I think it was 15 sculptures out there, and all 15 sculptures were subscribed. In other words, there was money to pay the guys to come and do those things. Just amazing, the way that happened. Special shout out to Independent Bank. Not all banks are created equal. Carol was there with support and dollars and people, and it's just amazing. So, it was really good.
Anyone else? Updates? All right. Moving along, we've got another opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation, if anybody would like to come forward. All right. Council member comments, I'll start with Scott.
Yeah, just a quick comment on the carvers coming in. The one I talked to said they really like coming here. They like the interaction of the community. They like the, just the general feel of the place. It's a real, it's a compliment from, from people who go all over the world. They all know each other. And they all, they're all going here, 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 and they like coming in. I think that's a great thing.
Yeah, excellent. Brandon? Dan?
Just big kudos to Friends of Williamson Parks, specifically the Chapmans. I think they spearheaded it for them. I know they've spent, I know this started Friday and ended Sunday, but I know I started taking calls from them in May. So, they've been working on it at least since then, and they did, they did a great job, and I hope they're getting caught up.
They went to Pennsylvania to the big one there to check out the scene.
Yeah, yeah, they did.
That's right.
But they did an amazing job, and all the other volunteers, but, you know, just big kudos.
Terry?
Kudos to the Romanian guy that won both prizes. That's an amazing sculpture. That is, wow.
Well, I'm bummed I was gone all weekend, and I missed the Chainsaw Festival, so I don't have much to comment, but it sounds like it was a great event.
Well, I want to echo everybody's sentiments, and I want to say thank you to our Williamson Community Events Group that we meet. It's an ad hoc group that's made up of John, I haven't been there lately because of my work obligations issue, but Nicole Allen, Brooke Donnelly-Grizlack, and Susan Byrd. That's really been our community events. And while this was not a Williamson community event, it was a Williamson community event, but the Williamson Friends of the Parks hit it out of the park, literally. I was down there Friday and Saturday, made my way around, talked to all the carvers, and all of our volunteers, the volunteers that were down there, the people that brought down tents and, and had their booths and the food trucks and the activities for the kids, and the beer and wine tent, the live music. We could hear when it was the chainsaw flash mob, whatever you want to call it, the quick car.
Quick car.
Oh my gosh, you could hear the chainsaws all the way down on William Street. So, it was a fabulous event. Our last farmer's market was Sunday. From what I understand, even though it rained, there was good attendance, so closing out the farmer's market season. You know, we've got this shift in, in daylight, so I'm kind of sad that football's coming to an end already for Williamson, but I'm excited about basketball volleyball season. So many things that are going on in Williamson. We've got our witches downtown, October 26th.
Two weekends.